Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the New Brunswick Board of Location Meeting. Stand on. The public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on March 2nd, 2018, for the whole New Brunswick community. The time and location of this meeting and all meetings of this body were posted in city hall. Set by fire this week in New Brunswick, Oklahoma. Mr. Hush. Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Shapitis. Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mr. Relles. Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell. We have a board.
The flag of our country salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
A reminder, the public hearing on budget meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 27th, 2018, beginning at 7:00 p.m. at New Brunswick High School right here in the auditorium. Regular board meeting will be held on Tuesday, April 17th, 2018, beginning at 7:00 p.m. At New Brunswick High School, here in the auditorium. Start with a 9:30 superintendent's report.
Yes, good afternoon. For the month of February, we had 104 district-wide suspensions, 15 harassment intimidation and bullying cases. Our March student enrollment was at 10,230, our student attendance at 94%, and our certificated staff attendance at 95%. Before we begin, what I'd like to do today is just to give a board-to-board an update on our progress with our strategic plan. As you know, we embarked on creating a district strategic plan for six priorities. Two years ago, being rigorous academic programs, human capital, theme-based schools, community engagement, as well as student accountability. And I'm not going to tell you all the progress in terms of what we're doing, but we are in year two, and we're starting to see some significant changes in the way we do business, in the way we teach, and also in the way we learn. But I do want to share six bullet points with the board briefly. Just want you to know that we are attracting and recruiting innovative teachers and administrators with high academic expectations, critical thinking skills, emotional intelligence, cultural competence, and social awareness. Just want the board to know that we did listen to you, and we're on that path. We believe, and we will truly believe, that all students deserve the best teachers and administrators to achieve success in their academics and in their future. You spoke a lot about the curriculum when we came on board, and we just want to report to you that we are developing a rigorous, relevant, culturally responsive curriculum that exceeds the needs of all learners. Our curriculum must foster creativity and passion by developing critical thinking skills and problem skills, which will enable our students to solve complex, real-world problems. Additionally, the learning in our district will encourage students' leadership and character building, which I think you will see today, and which you have heard throughout the past couple months. We will provide connections to social science and political affairs, and develop inquiry-based learning and reasoning learning models to prepare students to be successful, informed citizens. We are also supporting technology literacy by planning to provide every student a personal computer to take home and bring to school daily that is connected to the internet, to provide access to learning experience beyond the classroom, and support 21st century learning skills. I just want to let you know that we are piloting that model. We have that model working right now in a couple of our schools. Continue to strive for state-of-the-art facilities to provide our students with the optimum learning environment of small sizes that focus on STEM innovation, critical thinking, and engaging in collaborative conversations. Within a few months, our district will open the doors to the new Paul Robeson School with an expansion and a redefined theme, School of the Arts. This school will focus on art themes and provide our students with the opportunity to explore school programs with an art-infused learning environment. This facility will include a state-of-the-art learning environment which will serve as a pilot as we move to making this a standard in all New Brunswick public schools. And we are developing stronger community partnerships that will empower engaged community entities to assist in making decisions that will enhance student achievement and provide educational services to meet the needs of the school community. I just wanted to share those six bullet points with you to let you know the progress. I do remember those conversations that we had when we first came on board, and I do truly believe that we are moving forward. Today, in a couple minutes, you're going to see some of the fruits of our labor. You're going to hear from some students. You're going to hear from Jennifer, you're going to hear from Montesarat, Dwight, Diana, Ayesha, Julian, Aladio, Ryan, Michelle, Alyssa, Demarcus, William, Mohammedu, Maha, Shanika, Zo. These are some of the students that have come today just to share with you their experiences, their learnings, and more so, their leadership. So what I would like to do is to ask Mr. Smalls, Dr. Smalls, if you're over here today, can you just come and lead the first group?
Oh, excuse me. First of all, thank you so much for listening. You're an amazing listener, so that's great. Do you hear a motion to accept the superintendent's report?
I want.
Second?
Second.
Okay, local. Mr. Hush. Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell. Yes, sorry. Motion to adjourn. So, Dr. Smalls, when you come up, and also the students that actually participated in New Jersey National History Day, you may come and stand as well. And the teacher. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. How do we propel students to think critically? How can students indulge in high-level tasks? What resources can we provide to staff to end this process? Over the last few months, these questions remain at the center of the work that we do within the Curriculum and Instruction Department. Zalima Perez, my colleague, Zalima Perez, Virginia Lagos, Amelissa Morris, I know her, and others. All of us on a daily basis, we wrestle with these concepts because we want to see this manifested across all academic genres. It is their collaborative input that helped to give birth to initiatives that you will witness this evening, which is to cite textual evidence, determine a central idea or a theme, delineate and evaluate the argument and specific claims. There has to be more evidence than just the standards that we quote and we're referencing. The National History Day competition is an opportunity to display all these skills in a highly rigorous, engaging, and competitive arena. This is not just about a competition, but it is about how we revolutionize the manner in which we think, learn, teach, and assess the content. I officially presented this to the staff on January 22nd to see if we can use this as a pilot for this school year. Although most participants in the competition from other districts were given the topics well in advance, going back to last summer and in September, we were advised that, and I quote, "There is no way possible your students will be able to compete in this year's competition. Impossible to put together something at this time, at this late in the school year." At Paul Robeson School, under the leadership of Mr. Moore and Ms. Robinson, with teachers Ms. Servis and Ms. Dankovich facilitating, we had six, five, six participants in this year's competition. The theme was conflict and compromise. Alado Barrios and Ryan Palmer, their topic was the atomic bombs. Naver Wood, Afghanistan child leader. Julia Nicholas and Quentin Phipps, the Vietnam War. We have a few of our six participants, please give them a round of applause. I also want to take this time to thank Dr. Johnson and Ms. Skulson for providing the platform and the autonomy for us to bring programs that propel students and staff alike to go beyond their preconceived notions of boundaries. At the high school, the supporter, Mr. Redler, Ms. Edro Smith, and the direction, Ms. Infante, five scholars presented at the competition. What you are about to experience is their documentary, but what you're about to really experience is the fruition of an earnest belief in students coupled with the merger of passion, talent, commitment, and perseverance at the intersection of growth and vision. New Brunswick High School, from majority to minority, white flight and black pride in New Brunswick, New Jersey. Ms. Infante, Lettich, our students, Jennifer Robles.
Jennifer, put there.
You're too short, Jennifer, you've got to step up and see. Montesarat Alvarez. Ryan Comoro. And Diana Montanoros. From majority to minority, white flight and black pride in New Brunswick, New Jersey. This is not a PBS documentary, this was created by the scholars behind it. Please take a minute, seven minutes to be specific, to enjoy this wonderful experience.
In 1954, the United States Supreme Court declared segregated public schools unconstitutional and groundly board of education. This case propelled the desegregation and subsequent integration into the national spotlight as public schools were forced to act with all deliberate speed. A decade after this monumental case, racial tension erupted in New Brunswick, New Jersey. New Brunswick and two of its neighboring towns, North Brunswick and Milltown, shared a common high school for decades. As New Brunswick's black population increased from 15.4% to 22.7%, the white population decreased from 84.2% to 63.1%. The changes in the state's demographics only added to a list of problems the school was attempting to pacify. The school was bursting at its seams as student enrollment began to exceed the building capacity. The overcrowding forced the district to implement a split-stationed school day where students attended school for four hours per day. In 1969, parents in North Brunswick began the pressing construction of a high school within their community. They believed that New Brunswick High School could no longer deliver a high quality of education that students deserved since the building had exceeded in capacity. In addition, parents argued that a new high school was necessary due to the economic and safety concerns. Subsequently, parents also contended that a local high school would increase their property values. They also cited the incessant violence that occurred in New Brunswick High School as evidence that the school was no longer a safe place for their children. Many of the conflicts within the school stem from racial tension. New Brunswick officials widely opposed North Brunswick society to withdraw their students from New Brunswick High School because they firmly believed in school regionalization. Contrastingly, the minority students who attended New Brunswick High School welcomed the departure of their North Brunswick counterparts. They felt that the high school did not have their best interests at heart, and said they ignored their needs and directed their efforts to provide the white students copies opportunities to achieve success. Black students and their parents began to protest the inequalities that were occurring at their school. They demanded the inclusion of black history into curriculum and fair treatment amongst all races. Black parents vehemently believed in their children were overpoliced and undereducated. As tensions rose, fights became constant, and the hatred between the students in the school intensified. The increase in violence affected all communities involved, thus providing North Brunswick with concrete evidence that a new school was necessary. Fights became a standard part of the daily school experience, and violence in the surrounding community ensued thereafter. Mass hysteria had taken over the school as riots resulted in furniture being thrown and windows being broken.
Well, when they had the riots here at the school, they went to the city of New Brunswick on downtown, it started fires. There was fighting. The cops were all over the streets. We had the National Guard coming. They came into the school. We were, we had the National Guard walking through the school, trying to stop the fights in here. Kid people were getting beat up, the kids as well as the teachers were getting beat up. They were breaking down the doors and coming in the windows, and the National Guard was trying to stop the fighting here, as well as the police.
In certain instances, students stayed after school intentionally to hide from the chaos surrounding them. Many students were injured even though they were innocent past the virus. Not only were students experiencing physical pain, but the violence soon began to result in mental pain. Feelings of insecurity and anxiousness became normalized between the school's walls. Students and parents began to boycott the school. There were multiple efforts made to stop school disruptions.
It tore one group that I was involved in called the Brotherwood Trip. And we went on trips, the black students, the white students, and we got a chance to really know each other and talk over our problems. And before you know it, you know, things started to improve and get better.
The Afro Culture and Puerto Rican Culture Club members campaigned to end disturbances in the school. They stated that the disruptions are being caused mostly by black students, and that there are enough black parents to deal with the problem. To ameliorate this problem, they began to create flyers and posters to inform parents in the community about the violence within the school with the hope that their parents will talk to their children. Black parents gathered multiple times to discuss the circumstances they were facing. They were fearful of their children being constantly monitored by the police as well as the lack of interest teachers displayed towards the minority students. One parent stated, "It is not the fault of the youth, it is our fault. The adults are poisoning the youth's mind with racism. We are all racist." She firmly believed that the youth brought to the school with them the attitude they observed from their parents. North Brunswick parents wanted a safe learning environment for their children. They believed the only solution was to send their children to the new high school in North Brunswick that was completed in 1973. As the parents advocated for the separation of the regionalization, students staged protests as well. Protests sparked even more tension within the building. The New Brunswick Board of Education opposed the departure of North Brunswick students and adamantly engaged in years of legal battles with North Brunswick. Ultimately, it appeared that North Brunswick and its president had won the battle. Commissioner of Education, Frige Burke, issued an order that allowed all North Brunswick students to attend their local school. However, both North Brunswick and New Brunswick parents celebrated this decision. Both parties believed a compromise had been made as both districts would have local control over their schools, thus being able to ensure that their students were receiving an education of the highest quality.
Good afternoon. As you saw in our documentary, this was an honor to do, and we are all grateful for the opportunity that was given to us. We all put really hard work into it, and we learned how to be historians, collect data or data, whichever you prefer, and how to interpret history. As individuals, we all think differently on a certain perspective, and we all today and every day, we see what happened, and we all see different views of other people. We learn how to respect each other. We saw that we got people from North Brunswick side and New Brunswick side, and we put it together to show you what happened and how we've grown since then, and how New Brunswick has grown as people and as a community, as a school, and we're all really honored to work together. Thank you.
The National History Day is a national competition and has state-level competition, only if it has. And at the state level here in New Jersey, there are regional competitions that over the last month and a half, at Monmouth University, Princeton University, Rutgers Camden, and most recently on Saturday at Seton Hall University. What happens at that point, based upon various categories, documentaries, dramatic presentations, to name a few, the top from each region are selected, and those go on to the state competition on May 5th at William Patterson University. If so, if you win at that level, then you go to the national competition at the University of Maryland. So please give the high school students a round of applause because they are the regional winners from the Seton Hall University competition. Thank you, ladies. I just want to really, um, this might be a little tough for me. I'm just proud because the initial comment was that they could not do. I'm proud because they did this in such a little bit of time compared to other school districts. Some of us administrators had the opportunity to go to Seton Hall on Saturday. And I'm also proud, and this might sound a little weird, these are students. A lot of the school districts tend to send a certain type of students. They're GNT, they're gifted and talented students only. They're students in AP courses only. They're seniors only. These students here, and I don't want to call you regular students because you're students of New Brunswick. These are our students that are not what are labeled sometimes that we label in society, different group of students. These are all regular students that showed and demonstrated what New Brunswick can do in a short period of time. What impressed me most was as I sat in the back after their presentation, the three judges who asked some real tough questions, and to hear their responses that demonstrated dignity, pride, self-assurance, you know that they did this work. They felt this work. But what touched me the most, which I still need to find out, one of the judges asked, "What does this mean to you?" And one of the students stated, "This is, this is real to us because we still live this." That touched me, and I think as a community, as educators, as people, we need to understand what they're talking about. So, board members, I just want to show you that what we said that we were going to do, we are trying our best to do. The leadership, the leadership at the school levels, our teachers, but honestly, it's the voices of the children. The voices of the children is going to make a difference. Thank you personally for the bottom. My heart.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Johnson and students. Some of you know my dad, Louis, with Dr. King, and you're talking about something that we don't talk about in New Jersey. New Jersey is the third most segregated school system in the country, and that story has not, this should be on PBS. This should be on PBS, it was well done, it was factual, and it's dealing with issues that this society doesn't want to deal with. So on top of that, just thank you, thank you very much for making a difference, and we're going to make sure that this is seen as widely as it possibly can. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smalls. The board also would like to acknowledge some high school students, and I believe there are some middle school students, there may be some middle school students and elementary students, that came together to create a concept titled Dear Parkland. We would ask you to come up, and I think you may have a couple statements to talk about the events that just recently happened, I believe on March 14th. Why don't you come up?
Good evening, everyone. So first to start off, we are all just a group of students who led the event that took place on March 14th, which was a tribute to Parkland and what had happened down in South Florida at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. So first to start off, my name is Michelle Villa, and I'm a senior here in New Brunswick High School.
My name is Joshua Nunez, and I'm also a senior in high school.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Sanchez-Laura, and I'm a junior at New Brunswick High School.
My name is Will Ely, and I'm a senior at New Brunswick High School.
My name is Demarcus Hutchinson, I'm a junior here at New Brunswick High School.
Good evening, my name is Mohammedu Samari, I'm a sophomore at New Brunswick High School.
Remy Blandier, and I am a proud junior at New Brunswick High School.
My name is Mahamad Duvie, and I am a freshman at New Brunswick High School.
My name is Jakina Cook, and I am a freshman at New Brunswick High School.
To start off, I would like to say that the idea of what we did on March 14th came up, and I want to personally thank Kiara Gomez for starting a movement within the school and getting everybody involved by wearing all black or white that day of February, I believe it was around 16 or 17, well, the day after. And one day, in National Honor Society, we were all just making plans for the induction ceremony for the blood drive. It was just a regular National Honor Society meeting, and Mr. Redler happened to show up one day. And the idea of doing a walkout or anything to get all students involved already lingered within our minds, and we wanted to do something. So what I did was go up to Mr. Redler, and I asked, "Hey, can we do something that can tribute those that lost their lives?" And his response was so positive, and I want to thank Mr. Redler for giving us that, that push of confidence and positivity towards what we were doing. And he said, "Definitely, I'll let you know if anything does happen, but if it is student-driven, if it is all up to us, then it's a possibility of us doing something." And from that moment on, and I kid you not, we were planning like crazy. We spent hours on the phone texting. We were like, "Oh, we could do this, oh, we could do that." And it was trial and error, trial and error. And it wouldn't be done if it wasn't for that idea or one student letting the entire school know that this is a problem and we should have our voices heard.
So after we had meeting after meeting with Mr. Redler and Dr. Johnson, we kind of put together, you know, the logistics of everything and kind of keeping in mind that anything could go wrong on the day. However, we took it all into a positive view, and what we actually did was we made announcements throughout that same exact week, starting that Monday, letting all of the students know how serious the matter was. And in the end, on the day, everyone was just completely for it. And it was like all just, it was a community organization, basically. Like it was a New Brunswick High School thing. We put this together, us as students, yes, the ones that you see standing up here. Yes, we had kind of more of a direct effect towards it. However, everyone in this school did participate in some way with their respect and like with their, with their quietness and their silence as we exited the building and everything. So it was just a really, really good opportunity and a really great experience for us to go through. So it was just a really, really good opportunity and a really great experience for us to go through.
Okay, so I happened to be walking into school. I was going to my Finland class. And Mr. Redler came up to me and was like, "Alyssa, I need you to do something." And like me, like you tell me to do something and I'm like, "There, I'll do it." So then I had seen Michelle and Jocelyn in the office. I was like, "What are you going to do? Like, dude?" And then he told us, like, basically, he just gave us a general explanation of what he wanted us to do. And from there, we worked like really, really hard, hours and hours. And it was really fun. We like, it was really fun. And we got like different ideas. We didn't argue. Everything went fine. And so, yeah.
So for me, it started when I was sitting in Ms. Edgell's office and Alyssa came in. And she was explaining the fact that they had came up with this great idea to do Dear Parkland. And once I heard about it, I was like, "Great, that's what I want to be a part of. That's something that I believe that kids should come together and we should stick up for what happened." And then that's when I emailed Mr. Redler at the end of the day. And I was like, "Yeah, I would really like to be a part of what's going on and everything." And he was like, "Definitely." And then when I met up with them in Mr. Redler's office, and it was just something that I was proud to do, something like, I felt like I was, I don't know how to say it really. But it's like something that I felt was great that I did.
So how I got involved was because of Alyssa. She actually told me about it in our ABID class. And I was down for it. I wanted to help. So she basically got my word out to her team and basically got me into their group. And I basically worked with them to planning and making the banners and everything. And I was just down for it the whole time.
I want to start off saying that I cannot take most of the credit for this. These outstanding ladies and gentlemen got this together. How I got involved was my coordinator for the Untied Gems of the Civic League of New Brunswick. So he contacted me saying, "What do you guys want to do for, for March 14th, the walkout?" And I said, "Well, I feel like we should do more than a walkout. I feel this is more than just like us, just students going out." Because I didn't want students to feel like a day out, you know, no school, no classes, a lot of stuff, right? So I contacted the president of our Justice Society Network, Mr. Remy Plaidier. And we organized a date with Mr. Redler to talk to him to see what we could do, what we could get involved with. He told us what we could, he told us we'll get back to us what we could do. And we got tasked with holding the flyers out. And it might seem like a minimal task, but I feel proud that I could stand there and say, "I've done something. That I showed that I care." And I think it's a very important thing that students now, kids now, to show that we care, that we're out there, that we're not just sitting around, that we're doing something. I feel that's a very important thing.
Like Mohammed said, he reached out to me and I kind of just ran a research saying, you know, what's going on? I talked with one of the members from the Civic League, his name is Tim Hewitt. He told me I wanted to get, I wanted to participate in this event. And I said, "Oh, well, I'm down. Let's go." So to others, it might not seem like a huge task, like Mohammed said, holding out banners, but honestly, if it's something like that falls under, falls under the category of a school shooting, then I am, I'm honored to just like have a task like that. You can't even fathom the idea of having your loved ones lost, especially in a school shootout. So to partake in something that is considered minimum, it's an honor.
Okay, around two weeks ago, I had transferred to the New Brunswick High School. I wanted a new start and I want to contribute to the school as much as I can. And one day again, Alyssa has texted me and asked me, "Hey, do you want to be a part of this program? I'll let you know about all the details." And growing up, my parents taught me, like, try to be involved with the school as much as you can. And I thought, "Yeah, this would be an opportunity for me to do that." And as soon as I like came to the school, like everyone here, they showed me so much respect. And for them to like treat me as family, that was like, that just like melted in my heart because I was really happy about that. And to hear about the program and know that I'm actually doing something, helping for the school, that just made me happy.
Hi, I really didn't have a speech, so I'm just going to say from the bottom of my heart, I'm thankful that I'm doing this and I'm honored to be here. I also, two weeks ago, Alyssa sent out an email. So I wanted to partake in something and I wanted to get more involved in the school. And it was just some, it was an opportunity that I saw and I wanted to take it.
So kind of just to go over that one day of March 14th. So March 14th was the one-month anniversary of the Parkland shooting. And all it was labeled as nationwide was a national school walkout. Now, we named it Dear Parkland. It was Alyssa's idea. And this kind of had more of, so a walkout has more of a negative connotation to things. Dear Parkland was our idea of a tribute to the Parkland students and the victims. So this not only had a relation to the victims of Parkland, but also a relation to the victims of other school shootings from the past and just mass shootings in general, such as the one in Nevada and others, such as the one in nightclub in Florida. So what we kind of did, we also made posters. Posters with hashtags that were already trending from the Parkland students, such as hashtag #WeAreTheChange, hashtag NeverAgain, and of course, hashtag AllInForNB, as this is a community event and a student-led event. So we came up with speeches, a few of us. I had my own speech. Jocelyn had made a speech and Demarcus Hutchinson also. And then we had this one section, which was a dance, performed by many students here at the high school, ranging from all grades. And it was choreographed by our own Ms. Giglio, who is our dance teacher. And also, the main event was a tribute. It was more specifically a balloon tribute in which we each had 17 balloons. And each of them were released as we, us three had recited a poem made by Alyssa herself. And as we went through the poem, we would each state one of the victims' names, one of the 17 victims' names. And as we would state a name, a balloon would be released. So kind of going into this, the mayor was there, all of the Board of Education was there, most of them. And then honestly, I would just like to thank Mr. Redler again and thank Dr. Johnson for your support. And all of the Board of Education, thank you for the cookies too. And yeah, you guys were just really, really helpful. And the security guards, very, very helpful, even though it wasn't as easy explaining and having that meeting with you guys. But yeah.
I would like to say that, again, this is a student-led thing that we made. Speeches, as Michelle said, were written by us. Everything was by us. And what I really want to mention is that many districts are restricting students from going out and taking part of this nationwide movement. And for New Brunswick to take part of a nationwide movement tells you how much us students are there to show everybody else that New Brunswick isn't just a school full of minorities, isn't just a school full of people who aren't going anywhere. We are standing here. We are going places. We are showing everybody else that New Brunswick is here to stay. We are here to be the future leaders, to be going out there, going into corporations, becoming doctors. Who knows what we're going to do? But at the end of the day, we're going to do it with pride because we're here. We're zebras. And for us to go out and saying, "Oh, hey, what school did you go to? I went to New Brunswick High School." Search it up and you will find this program that just went on, March 14th. If you search up any of our names, you will search up and it will be like the second search in Google. And for that to be possible, I think it's just incredible because it's, we're not just doing it for us. We're doing, doing it for New Brunswick High School.
And I would also like to mention to everyone, and I would like to inspire you to never be afraid to do anything. If you just believe in your heart and you have something you aspire to do, just do it. I'm, I am a part of a lot of programs. I'm part of the Frank Pogon Youth Advisory Council and a lot of programs at Rutgers University and the Middlesex County College. And although I work really, really hard, I do, I do not see, I don't really see the change, if that makes sense. Like you don't see it or you don't really feel it because there's so many other children there. And after this, after this event, when I was going home on my bus, I was like, "I really did this." And I really felt that change. I saw like in the students, how quiet they walked out and how peaceful it was and how everybody cooperated. And a lot of people came up to me. They were like, "Oh, your speech was so good. Everything was so nice." And everything just went really nice. And seeing people, it was really cold and windy and they still were outside clapping. And all the time that they thought Jocelyn was crying, they were like, "Jocelyn, keep going." It was like the best, best feeling ever. And everybody cooperated really nice. And I wanted to, and, and, and.
Sorry to interrupt you quick, but I just want to say one important thing, that no matter what goes on around the world or in your community, I want you to speak up. Utilize your First Amendment right to the fullest extent. Say what is on your mind. And from time to time, don't even be afraid of having a compassionate heart. If you see somebody alone, talk to them, even if they don't want it. People often reject what they really need. And that's when you have to be there. That's when you have to be at the strongest. Your words are powerful, are powerful tools and they can affect somebody deeply. And if you're going to let someone get to that point where they're going to break emotionally, then they're going to be forced to make irrational decisions that could change everybody's life. So why would you let it get to that point when you can actually nip it at the bottom? All I'm just asking you to say is have a compassionate heart because a little kindness goes a long way.
I would just like to add, I would like all the adults here to recognize the efforts of the students and to show, we are trying to show that we're not just sitting around, that we are strong, that we are trying to give out to the world what we want, to give our message out to the world. Every day we hear that we are the future, that we are people, we are strong. We will be more than people behind us. And I firmly believe that is true. We will go, we'll go through lengths far and wide to get what we need, to show the people that we are more than we are thought to be. Why, you ask? Because none of us can stand up here and say that we are here because of our own selves. We are here because of people. People believed in us. They loved us. They cared for us. And from the bottom of my heart, I think everyone who has helped me, helped anyone, any child, tried to lift them up, thank you so much. All your beliefs, just keep believing in us and your, sorry, I'm getting a little emotional now. That your work, all your efforts will be reciprocate, will be brought back to you tenfold. Thank you, thank you.
I want to thank all of you for your time and your honesty and your hard, hard work. You're great role models. So keep up, keep up the good work. I guess we now have Jim Jack from George Street Playhouse. Welcome, Jim. How are you? Good to see you.
Yeah, good to see you all. Good to see you all. And first of all, I just want to just thank the students for their extraordinary documentary and for your beautiful words of protest in advocating for the preciousness of life and the capacity for all of us to learn in a safe place where our ideas and our passions can come forward. And I just really appreciate the kind of, the feeling in this room tonight is really powerful. And Dr. Johnson, I want to really thank you and Ms. Guza for creating a culture where these children feel so empowered to share their voices boldly with the world. One of the things that we are so passionate about in what we've done now, this is our, we're going to share with you a report of our seventh year, last year, of working with the district and working in alignment with the curriculum to create powerful voices about children and their capacity to be informed, passionate, expressive individuals. And last year, we worked with over 1,550 students in all of the schools outside the high school and really looked at how to use the curriculum as a source of inspiration to create art through the form of theater. And so tonight, in the past, we've printed that report for you and it's been in a book. We've now created a digital version that can more directly express the scope of the work, that all these amazing principals help support directly in their schools and give you some of the images of some of the work that the children have done. We'd like to start with, first off, the Ensemble Project at Lincoln Annex. And that is a theme school that is happening. This is the big, and what we do up in Lincoln each year with Ms. Dobson and her amazing students in the fourth grade is create musicals based upon their curriculum. This, last year was the first time they had done a health science focus. And so they looked at the stories of six extraordinary women who made incredible contributions to science. And each class in the fourth grade selected a different individual to study and research and create a musical based upon their life. And Temple Brandon, who did some incredible things, was one of the people they studied. And the very famous song that they created out of that is called Think Like a Cow. And it was really beautiful to watch these children take such passionate interest in these powerful women and tell their stories with authentic creativity and joy. So what we're always interested in is how does the art form help us understand humanity, collaboration, and the capacity to understand what is important in the world? And these students gave us great inspiration for that. The next program we'd like to focus on is our work we've been doing up at the middle school for this, this was our seventh year up there, the drama across the curriculum. This is a piece that looks at the experiences of children during the Holocaust and it really focuses on literacy and social studies. The students read Jerry Spinelli's Milkweed and basically looked at the experience of children during the Holocaust and had additional information from photographs, testimonials, and crafted two extraordinary pieces of theater that deeply expressed what it meant to experience that, the Holocaust from a child's point of view. And what was really moving to us is the amount of empathy the children expressed as they understood deeply those circumstances and how they worked as a unit to tell passionate stories that really recognized not only what happened in the past, but also what's happening in our world right now and how we have to speak with boldness to prevent such atrocities from happening in the future. This is a quote from a student that really touched me. "A moment left an impression on me was seeing pictures from the Holocaust and reading about the Holocaust. And when we did the performance, it gave me a better understanding of it." So basically, we believe in the power of embodiment. Embodiment, embodying the circumstances of individuals and how that gives us a pathway to empathizing with their circumstances. I love that picture. As we kind of move through, the next thing we'd like to talk about is our Theater at the Core program. This is the program that we've been doing since our early partnership with the district, starting in Paul Robeson and Lord Sterling, that really looks at content knowledge and building content knowledge with students in specific areas of what they're studying in their classroom. And what's been great about theater arts integration is we're integrating the art form directly into the curriculum. We're not bringing something outside. It's what the students are working on in their unit of study. And so we're going to give you a little bit of a flavor of some of the things we worked on last year. But as you'll see, each of the schools of all the elementaries plus the middle schools are represented here in various grades. And you can click on each of these links and get an example, an insight into what is specifically happening. So you want to pull up Livingston real quick? This is Livingston, fourth grade, and they looked at the American Revolution. And specifically, some of the stories that are not often heard, some of those untold stories, they researched those. And what we see is some of the children really taking responsibility for the human stories that are associated with these wars, rather than just a paragraph about who died, what happened, and moving on. So and how these, how war impacts families and communities and what did our, and why that war was fought to really protect the freedoms that we all hopefully want to continue supporting as we go forward. At Lord Sterling, fifth grade, you're talking a little bit about informed students looking at social issues in the world. The students in the fifth grade wanted to look at apartheid. And so they, each class took a different aspect of the apartheid movement, really dissected, researched it, made some connections and connected their own assumptions to what they thought this was and really after the research, what they understood it to be. And really were incredibly passionate about advocating the rights of why that type of segregation should never happen again in this world. So it was very powerful and proud of them for taking such deep responsibility for such a complex topic. We go to... Oh, this is, this is one of our favorite images, but it's... Oh, this is one of our favorite images, but it really speaks to what we just heard earlier. "I believe some of the quieter students found their voice." And that's what always our hope is at George Street, is that we believe in collaboration, that every voice is central to the whole. And so we're always very excited to hear from the teachers about who are the children that don't speak and all of a sudden have found their voice amongst the work. And Julian is also one of our students who attends our summer academy, so he's definitely found his voice. And this is another instance of McKinley in the third grade. I love this image, such a passionate, bold statement from a young man. Let me do the sixth grade, there we go. So the other thing that, outside of social studies, we also look at literacy and mythology. And Paul Robeson, sixth grade, as they are moving directly into being that themed school for the arts, where I'd love for you to take a look at some of these images of the students and the work. The introduction, this is a school that is where we started in third grade seven years ago. And the students are utilizing a variety of different theatrical strategies to tell stories of mythic proportion. So I'd love the commitment you see and the kind of style and integration. Can you slide that a little bit? And figuring out how to tell complex stories of how storms destroy worlds through use of fabric and ensemble-based experiences. And students taking emotional responsibility for the impact of devastation in communities.
Hi, everyone. I'm Krista Salado, Assistant Director of Education. I'd like to just speak about specifically. This was a really compelling residency because these students created original myths, used mythic structure to talk about the refugee crisis in Greece. And so they were really compounding their knowledge and information from a variety of sources, looking at written text. They also did a deep dive into a podcast from This American Life and really had to investigate a variety of sources of information to create an original piece inside a structure that you don't normally use to look at a story of immigration. And it was deeply compelling and powerful and really reflected the amount of growth they had shown in the past three years in the schools and in the program.
Thank you, Krista. And Roosevelt, the fourth grade, we looked at the La Pea Indians and natural resources and how natural resources affect cultural storytelling. And so you see the level of engagement and the commitment to their work and their thinking about these stories of the past and how they inform the present, which is just wonderful. One of the things we also do is we combine, especially since now that the literacy and the science curriculum provide an opportunity for us to look at ELA and science. So water conservation, Native American culture is something they did at Red Shaw this year, which was amazing, is how to kind of theatricalize the water cycle. And really looking at it both a present context and sort of some of the the Native American fights that have been happening around water and the Exxon pipeline. And also, what are some of the mythic structures around water that were in those Native American myths and how they still are valid today? So they did a really wonderfully creative residency that used both ELA and and science themes to express their theater. The other things that we do at George Street is all the students have an opportunity, the teachers get to advocate for which ones would like to take part as in members of the part of our Beyond the Classroom with our Summer Theater Academy. We offer scholarships throughout the summer, and last year, we had an opportunity to do that at Lord Sterling. Thank you Frank, Mr. Ludoce, and Superintendent Johnson for providing us when George Street did not have a home last summer because our building was being taken down before a new one was being built up. But we brought many, many students had an opportunity to provide a free scholarship to spend their summer with us. And they're our Inspire Circle scholars. I love Brittenelli and this amazing picture of her in Lion King, so that's a wonderful, wonderful expression of her work. The other thing that we've been very blessed with is to pair our work with also the work of the Civic League and in our Ensemble After School program, it's both a theatrical and STEM-based program. So students are creating theater out of STEAM-based experiences. So they're designing the costumes, creating the sets, doing the sound and lighting design. And that has been very successful both at Paul Robeson and Lord Sterling and potentially at other schools going forward, as well as the middle school. Lastly, we'd love just to really briefly introduce you to the teaching artists that we bring into the classroom. All of them are very highly trained in theater arts integration. They are passionate about their work and their opportunity to work with the extraordinary students of New Brunswick. And each year, we have a chance, we were in seventy-five classrooms last year. I just feel so blessed for the support that the board gives us and the superintendent and all the principals and the teachers, because without you guys, it would not be possible. So thank you again. This is a digital report. We've sent it to Dr. Johnson and we've disseminated it to the principals and they've sent it to the teachers. But anyone in the board would like it to look through, we'd be happy to get it to you as well. So thank you so much for your time. Deeply appreciate it.
Thank you so much. My daughter's known your program at George Street. I was on the board, you know, years ago, so it's just nice to... You're the second-largest school-based arts theater program in the country, right?
We are the largest in New Jersey and in terms of our touch, because of our touring company and the residency program, one of the largest in the country.
In the country, yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on to the minutes, February twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen, do I hear a motion? Second. Roll call, please. Yes. Great. We'll move on to item number seven, the Facilities Committee report. Mr. Spencer.
Yes, Mr. President. The Facilities Committee did not meet this month. Provide the report next month.
Thank you. The Policy Committee report, Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, Policy Committee met on March thirteenth. We have ten policy and/or resolution... Regulations. You need to make a motion to accept the changes.
Make a motion.
Regulations and policies. I don't make...
Someone wants to make a motion? Second? Okay, roll call. Yes. The Athletic Committee report, you will take it.
Athletic Committee did not meet this evening due to emergencies by the Athletic Director. But we do have a bank reconciliation and I need a motion to accept.
Is there a motion? Second? Roll call, please. Yes. Excellent. The Curriculum Committee report, Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, the Curriculum Committee met on March thirteenth. We have a presentation by the Madge Supervisor, Supervisors Dr. Small and Mrs. Perez. They give a presentation on the curriculum on how we address critical thinking, civil engagement, and gender equality. They presented on making our curriculum relevant and real to the growth of our students. It showed the progression of learning from grades one through twelve and how this connects locally and globally. As you seen earlier, Dr. Small got up, gave this presentation on the accomplishments at the New Jersey National History Day Regional Competition. And as he stated, they competed at Scene Hall on March seventeenth. And at the state finals, we spent May fifth. We, the student body, administrators, board members, and all the students look forward to seeing their success at the state competition. We also have the New Brunswick Debate Team, twenty students. Will be competing at the annual Princeton moot court competition on April twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth at Princeton University. A moot court is a simulation of a, of an appeals court or Supreme Court hearing. Our students will have to address issues related to constitutional law. We can wait to be updated under success. We reviewed and approved Abrams Land of Arts, Grade Three, curricula or textbooks, and social studies, Grade Five, US History one and two, and world history. And our other business were resolutions. We had from A to Q resolutions that are part of the conservative items which we will go on shortly.
Thank you for that thorough report. Public Relations Committee, Mr. Diana Slade.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to mention that the Middlesex County School Boards Association held its thirty-third annual Student Recognition Program honoring outstanding juniors and seniors in Middlesex County High Schools. Four of our own students here from New Brunswick were acknowledged. Kevin Duran from New Brunswick Health Sciences Tech, Erica Jimenez from New Brunswick High School, Caitlin Martinez from New Brunswick High School, and Shayla Merino from New Brunswick Health Sciences Technology High School. They were all acknowledged for being very outstanding students. I'd like to just acknowledge the students that participated in the events this month, especially at Deer Parkland. It meant so much to me at a time when there's just so much going on in this world. And to know that we had such a beautiful ceremony and that it was student-led, it just, it really moved me so much to the point of tears to know that we have children that are being empowered and just uplifted. And it's really awe-inspiring what you guys did, and it means so much to us, so much to me. You guys ought to be really proud of yourselves. I know that we are all very proud of you for the work that you put in to get this accomplished. I just, I can't speak highly enough of you guys, really. I've never been more proud to be a zebra than I am at this very moment. And it's really just awesome. You guys make us proud. And Mrs. Salowski, we'd like to mention something else for Public Relations, thank you.
There was one more Public Relations that I forgot to remind Diana about. Our students, the elementary school, the third graders, took part in Waiting in the Wings, which was part of the American Repertory Ballet program. They were Dance Power students. And thirty of our students were awarded scholarships for next year. And they gave a remarkable performance. They were really fun to watch. And it was an enjoyable evening and it brought back a lot of memories. Having, my daughter was a Dance Power student, so you could see the butterflies and you could see some budding, really, really good dancers. You can see it even when they're that young. So it was a really nice evening. And to the students from Deer Parkland, you know how I felt. I already talked to you that day. And just as Diana said, again, I'm proud to be a zebra.
Thank you very much. I'm Twelve, Educational Services Commissioner of New Jersey. Our, my report is really built around what we call community-based initiatives, community-based learning. Really, students on the autism spectrum, students that are emotionally challenged, students that are ultimately disabled, to really try to get them jobs and positions and really on-the-job learning, to really go to various places. And you'll see throughout New Brunswick and the area that a number of our students are there serving, you know, helping people, and it's just a wonderful, wonderful thing for them and for those that interact with them. So my president's report, there is a special spirit in this place tonight that I didn't prepare any remarks. But this week, and thank you, Dr. Johnson, for your leadership. You have a very student-centered leadership. You want to hear from the students, you empower the students. And a lot of people don't understand why that's so important. You know what, I had, you know, I've been around a long time, so I had the opportunity, and it was an opportunity to be in South Africa during apartheid for six weeks. And at that time, sixteen percent of the white country controlled eighty-four percent of the black population. So it was good to see that. My daughter in Woodrow did a project on apartheid. And so I was there during the cusp of a change, and we're in the midst of a change here in this country. A lot of people don't understand that. And that this change is not gonna happen from the people our age up here, it's gonna happen from you. And so many of the school districts that are punishing students for going out, and empathy is my favorite word, and I've heard it a number of times tonight. But so often, it's great to empathize with people who are peers and people who are struggling. But also to empathize and understand where people in power are coming from. And so what happens is people don't want kids to walk out and protest because everything's copacetic. And if you know the history of the word, copacetic is a word that is invented by African-Americans, actually, that is in the dictionary. That everything's fine, so why is anybody protesting? Why? Why should we change? And those of us who've had the privilege of growing up in urban communities understand that today is our day, this is our time, because we know that eighty-four percent of the world can't pay their bills. We know that people are struggling, and we can't accept that anymore. So one of the things that you students who are here in New Brunswick have to understand, and I know you understand it, but other students have to understand, is that academic excellence is empowerment. That academic excellence and challenging those people who will beat down in New Brunswick, who are complaining about New Brunswick, who are saying there's always something wrong with the district like New Brunswick. So when you go out into the world, you have to be smarter, better, more eloquent. You have to be better read, more knowledgeable than anybody else you come across. That's part of this empowerment. And that's part of what Dr. King personified. And my favorite picture is my picture of my dad, Dr. King, and Ralph Ammannathie organizing in March of nineteen sixty-five to integrate the Boston Public Schools. And so Dr. King was one of the most eloquent human beings ever on this earth. And so as you talk about things and you understand, I'm encouraging you to go back to your students to say, mediocrity is not part of this movement to change the world. Excellence is all about, is what we all have to be about. You have demonstrated it. You demonstrated it the other day outside, you demonstrated it tonight. But I hope you are ambassadors to really help this district to understand that we are filled with brilliant young people. And one of the things that the twenty-first century learning means that kids don't know how good they are until they're in the real world. And so often, the old education was keep them in the classroom, don't let them get out. Have them read a book and just talk. But by doing what you're doing, you understand the value of scholarship now, I guarantee, more than ever than you did two weeks ago. So please, all of us understand that academic excellence, and let's stop beating up New Brunswick. Let's stop complaining about the little things. We are in a position to make history, to really make New Brunswick the starting point. And I was so moved by that video. Excuse me, the starting point for making history. So thank you all very much. With that, we'll take some public comments.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jack Cato. I am a resident of sixty-one Renaissance Lane. I am a lifelong resident of New Brunswick. I'm a proud taxpayer, and I am also running for Board of Education for the upcoming election on April seventeenth. First off, I would like to congratulate all the students for their documentary, also for the Parkland protest, and also for the George Street Playhouse. And also, I want to thank you guys for supporting them too. It's good to see one administration, students, and artists get together to create something that is really above and beyond all of us here, so I would like to thank you all for that. However, tonight, I want to talk to you about a different issue which I feel is very pressing and that is actually very detrimental to the New Brunswick public school system. And in lieu of what you just said, Dr. Caldwell, I would like to talk about, you know, a different type of empowerment, something that I believe in, which is advocacy. First, I'd like to ask a question to you and to any of the board members. Was anyone present at the city council meeting last week? Was anyone present at the city council meeting last week? Okay. Was anyone currently on board aware of a new building that's going to be developed on New Street and an abatement that they're going to receive from the city?
This is public comment. This isn't question and answer. So again, could you make some?
Absolutely. I'll make my comment really quick then. Traditionally, property taxes within the city in New Brunswick are divided into three different entities: the city government, the county government, and the public school system. As of last year, the city government received 43.9% of taxes collected. The government received 17.2%, and the school system received 39%. However, under an abatement, which is currently under review by the city council, this new building that's going to be developed by a development corporation from Georgia is going to get a massive discount. And of that discount, whatever money is left, 95% of it is going to go to the city operations, and 5% is going to go to the county government, which means that our public schools will be left out and will only receive a very negligible amount from land taxes. Making matters work, the New Brunswick School District will still be required to educate every single child that will happen to live in that building without receiving any revenue resulting from this development. Instead, our schools will receive a very small pittance coming from land taxes. This is something that is very, very detrimental, and I really hope that each of you, as civil servants, will really take into consideration and do something about because this leaves our city with two different scenarios. The first scenario is if the city council decides to step out and reject this abatement, this massive tax possession. That building, over the first 30 years, will pay a total of $108.8 million in regular property taxes, as I am homeowner, as many of the students' parents would do, which means that $101 million of the building, $101 million dollars you make from the building and $7.74 million will be made from land taxes. And normally, that would be split between the three different entities, which is the city government operations, the county government, and of course, our public school systems. Ultimately, if that abatement does not pass and they pay the taxes in full like everyone else, the school system will receive $42.4 million over a 30-year period. However, I have a feeling that this abatement, which will pass, and I think that's really bad, which leads us to our second scenario. According to the developer, in their Year One of development in 2020, they will receive a massive discount proposal under that ordinance, paying only $900,000 in the building to be split between the county and the city, leaving the schools to collect only a meager $72,000 a year coming only from land taxes. In Year Two, according to the developer and their plan with the city council, in lieu of the payment, their taxes will increase to $1.4 million to be split again only by the county and the city, leaving the school out of the picture. And the schools will continue to only receive $72,000 as the city operations and as the county government will see an increase in taxes, you know, profit and revenue. And the schools will only be left with the land taxes. In total, if this abatement passes, the developer will save between $28 million to $46.4 million, depending if they meet their revenue goals or not. So if they don't make a profit, they're going to fall short and only pay minimum taxes. Either way, the school district will receive just only over $3 million over 30 years instead of the full $42.4 million. That is a total loss of $39.3 million to our schools, which is something that we cannot simply afford. That is a $39.3 million loss that can be used in strengthening artistic programs, that can be used to empower these students even more. And I really hope that as civil servants, that you guys take that seriously and start attending other meetings in order to stand up for the system, for, I'm sorry, for your students, and for the good work that you're doing because this is something that's really important. Unfortunately, I have a feeling that it will get passed down the road after the election, and I really hope you guys take that seriously. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
My name is Lynn Stork. I have been trying to find out how many...
Say your address, please.
Tal Park Bolard?
In New Brunswick.
Yes. I have been trying to find out how many uncovered teacher absences we had last year. And I have not been able to get that information. I was sent the total number of teacher absences requiring a substitute, but that's not helpful. I don't know if you recall, my original concern was that I commend you for doing the right thing and bringing in an additional resource of substitutes, an agency to supply more substitutes, but I was concerned that the amount of money that could be used there was kept very low and that it wouldn't be enough. So as long as we're doing the right thing, why don't we make sure that we actually put enough money there to actually cover all the days when teachers are out? And it's so disruptive. And at this point, my question would be not even so much for last year because that's already been done and the amount has been decided. I get, excuse me, unless you would consider amending it to let more money be used there. At this point, I would be more interested in knowing how many days still are not covered because I have reason to believe that this is still going on. And it is so incredibly disruptive, I know, as for many years in the district. As long as you get in a qualified substitute, even if they're not the best, even if the kids in that class don't have the same experience they would have had if their own teacher was there, obviously, but at least it doesn't disrupt everybody else. You cannot even imagine how disruptive it is to be told, you know, with no notice that on your third-period prep, when you were going to prepare materials for the rest of the day, and Kid Burn is all about setting things up and having things ready, you instead are going to run up three flights of stairs from the basement into a glass cold for 40 minutes, there in the middle of doing something, and try and do that for 40 minutes, and then you're going to run back down the three flights of steps to the basement and collect your kids and try to get back into what you were doing without having had your prep done with no notice. Aside from the logistics that you can't be in two places at once, and it actually takes time to run up and down three flights of stairs, and that's disruptive, but just, and when teachers are pulled to cover classes, that affects the whole school. If there's not going to be a certain kind of class given that day because that person has been pulled to cover a classroom, that's incredibly disruptive. If two teachers are being pulled out of an inclusion, if one of the teachers is coming out of an inclusion class, that puts it out of compliance. So we should really, really be trying to, and I would even go further and say that we should consider getting substitutes for non-certificated staff also. Two people's job is two people's job. Trying to have, you know, how many of you would leave your five-year-old with a babysitter that had 30 kids, between 25 and 30 kids, by themselves? You wouldn't do that even for babysitting. And to think that the academic instruction is going to go on as usual, even though it's the assistant teacher that is absent, and by law, you are not required to, it's legally okay for the teacher to be in, but you have to understand, we're doing small group instruction. That's a small group that is not being instructed if that assistant isn't there. That's class time that the teacher now has to use to do all the things that the assistant teacher did to support instruction. Now the teacher has to do those things because they are necessary things. So...
We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
So, well, I would also really like to know if that information is not available or if it can't be. I would think that...
Ms. McGuire will answer.
Okay. Good evening. I do recall sharing the information with you that you said was not the information that you saw it, and then invited you to have a phone call because, as you have pointed out so eloquently, there are so many layers to this that exchanging emails probably wouldn't do it justice. So I want to just renew my invitation to have a phone conversation with you. I know that you were traveling for some time and needed to follow up with you. So I want to renew that invitation to have a call, phone call with you so that way I can give you the information that you need as opposed to trading emails.
Okay. So it's, I actually did try to call. Your extension does not go to your office, and I went to the main switchboard, and they put me through to somebody who was also not you and who also did not pick up.
I'm going to come down right now and give you my direct dial.
All righty. And as far as it needing to be a phone conversation, all I need in the email home asking for is a figure. It's a number. It's really not that complicated. How many days did we not cover last year? And how many days at this point are we not covering this year for that matter, even with this contract that affects all the problems?
Thank you very much. I think we're at the five minutes. All right, next, please. Give your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Nancy Love. I'm a proud resident of 52 Comstock. I'm also the running mate of Jad Cato from New Brunswick Board of Education. So first of all, I'd like to thank you for sending me the information regarding the guidance counselors and its ratio to each school. I wrote back asking if I could have the information for the data of social workers because the role of social workers is also really important for schools. I can say so from my own personal experience. I wrote back, but I haven't heard back for a while. So I've just been waiting to hear back about the data concerning social workers and the number of social workers per schools.
Good evening. Who did you send your request to?
It was someone who reached out back to me after the last E-Board meeting, and they emailed me with the information, with the guidance counselor information.
That was me, however, I didn't receive a response or an acknowledgement.
Okay, I responded, but I can send you another response.
Thank you.
Also, many of us are aware that around the nation, parents and guardians and families, we are all worried about the safety of our family members and students attending school. And students are walking out of schools, they're marching on streets, they're organizing. And what the New Brunswick High School students have done is amazing and it's beautiful. But what is the Board of Education doing right now to address this issue? It is great that you have supported them on this endeavor, but what concrete steps have you done to address this pressing issue of safety in the schools?
As I said, there's actually been a lot in the press about some of the security issues that we've done. If you have a specific request, please send it to us, and we'll make sure to get you that information.
Have there been any latest updates about what you have done in response to all the latest national issues?
Yeah, again, first of all, this is public comment, so not question and answer. And so there is plenty of information. So please contact, there's plenty of stuff that we've done and made that a priority, and we're actually very, very proud of the things that we've done.
Okay. What about the uniform policy, then?
As I said, you know, please, this is not question and answer. Please send the request if you have a question about the uniform policy.
Okay, it's just...
Just real, good afternoon. I think you asked the same questions at the last board meeting. I do not want to discuss security issues. We keep those private. Discussing them publicly may also put the district at risk. That's number one. Second thing about school uniforms is I responded to the last board meeting. This board has held me accountable to that, and I did respond to you saying that this is something that I told them I could to work on, and we'll be working on it moving forward, the same response as the last time.
Are there currently any active attempts to fundraise for uniforms?
That's all I'm going to answer at this moment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other comments? If you could state your name and the address, please.
Sure. Charles Cradaville. I'm the editor of New Brunswick Today. I'm a resident of New Brunswick, and I wanted to start by saying that it was really impressive, all of the presentations that we heard tonight, and it makes me proud to be a resident and makes me proud of the youth here. And to me, it's another reason that the board should take the initiative of joining the majority of municipalities and the majority of school districts in the county and televise your meetings. You know, New Brunswick Today records them, and anybody can watch this. It's a public service we do. But I know that the majority of districts in Middlesex County have taken this step long ago to formalize recording the meetings and putting them either on the internet, television, or both. And I think that that's a positive step that would showcase some of the great things that go on here since we all are proud of them. I think it makes common sense. And so I wanted to see if you could please ask the person who's in charge of the Public Relations Committee if they support that.
Again, as you know, this is public comment. So you've made a comment. I hear you.
I believe in the bylaws of this board. It actually says that the agenda should have open questions from the public. Is that not the case? Could somebody check the bylaws?
Does it say open responses?
I suppose you are not required to respond to the questions, but as I've told you in other scenarios, it makes you look bad when you don't. So I would hope that the person who's in charge of the PR committee could just simply respond with a yes or no, whether or not she supports that.
Do you have other comments?
So just for the record, you're refusing to refer the question to the Public Relations Committee. She won't say yes or no, whether or not she supports that?
Charles, just put the next comment.
Okay. So for the record, you are refusing. I need to get some information about the agreement you made with Catholic Charities to continue to extend your lease with them. Can you please ask Mr. Jadaron if he has an annual rental figure for us?
You're talking about the Sacred Heart lease, I presume? That's not Catholic charities.
Okay, I think it said Catholic charities on there.
No.
Okay. Well, look, do you know the amount?
What about, we're still in negotiation.
Still negotiating.
Diocese of Trent, or Diocese of the Tutchin, I apologize. So that's ongoing. Probably by the next meeting, we will have that ironed out.
Great. And can you tell me what the board wants to use the space for?
Not me. That's a... We, well, we, currently, the space is used for early childhood, pre-kindergarten classrooms, and we expect to continue to use it for that same purpose.
Thank you. So I do want to emphasize the importance of the upcoming election. I know that not everybody on this board supported the idea of having elections, but we have them now, and they're important. And I'm concerned to see that the board has scheduled yet again a public meeting in the middle of the election. Can you confirm for me, the hours of the election conflict with your April 17th board meeting? What are the hours of the election?
The hours of the election are from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Okay. And you guys are holding a public meeting here at 7:00 PM, so...
One hour of... How many hours? It's only one hour out of 13 hours.
Maybe so, but there are, you know, 30 or 29 other days during the month that you're not having a meeting on one of those days and not have a conflict between the two. I've brought this up before, so I won't belabor the point. Is there any idea of what the election will cost, the district, or what last year's election cost?
Rich?
Yeah, it cost about $65,000.
Okay. And so there was an extremely low turnout last year, and indeed, so low that the top vote getter, Mr. Chairman, you had a little over 200 votes. So I think that something we should all do is do everything we can to encourage people to get out and vote this time on April 17th. The deadline to register to vote for those who are not registered is March 27th. And so anybody who's not registered, wants to register, anybody who's going to be 18 by Election Day can vote, and so you should exercise your right to vote. by election day can vote, and so you should exercise your right to vote. Your vote is your voice, it's very important. And, you know, we have a city of 60,000 people, more than 20,000 people registered to vote, and last time, only a few hundred came out. So I hope that this year, we'll see an increase, and I hope that everyone here in this room will do their part to get their friends, family, neighbors, coworkers to register and to vote, no matter who you're voting for. It's important that we exercise that right. And so I, you know, hopefully, next year, you won't schedule a conflicting meeting at the same time as the election. But regardless, I hope everybody gets out and vote, because last year, there were two board members that did not even vote, and I was going to ask them about it, but neither of them are here tonight. I am also concerned about the, I'm still concerned about the first election. So on December 21st, 2012, that was the deadline for folks that was advertised to submit their petitions. Two of the candidates that are running this year--
Charlie, the five-minute buzzer went off with--
I didn't hear a buzzer.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we have a little buzzer up here. I think we're going to get a louder one up there at some point.
Okay, well, yeah. If you just let me finish my point, and I'll move on. So basically, the two candidates, Ronald Hush and Diana Solis, were given an extra three days to submit their petition in an unannounced decision that gave them an unfair advantage in that election. I've tried to get the answer to this question--
That's not the order now. That election was six years ago, sir. But just move on.
Okay, so I just want to get the answer to my question, which was never answered, six years ago, which is, if you could please, Mr. Chairman, through the chair, please refer this to Ms. Solis. Can you just tell me, why did you turn in the petitions after the deadline? It was advertised. How did you know that was going to be--
Charlie, we're over time, but the superintendent had a question for you, a statement for you.
May I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
I just have a minor concern off this topic. I know you've been recording today, and our students did present their national history. This is really in-house. Their video should not be public until presentation May 5th, which means no other person, no other students, no other district should have the opportunity to view their work. And I ask if that's edited out of your video before posting it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll consider that. I mean, this is a public meeting, and obviously, it's, you know, free to record and publish what happened there. But I got to be honest, I'm less likely to grant a request from the board if the board is unwilling to answer my question. So could you please refer to Ms. Solis one question? Why did she turn in petitions after the deadline if it was advertised?
Charlie, you're over time. Is anyone else who'd like to speak?
You're refusing to refer the question.
Anyone else? Charlie, and so, just for the record, we're asking you to do that for the students, not for the board. So you can choose to keep it in there. If you, if you care about our students, you'll edit that out. If you don't, it's obvious where you are.
And can you articulate why?
Thank you very much. Why what?
Why don't you want the video showing? I thought--
Because they're, the superintendent just explained it, they're in the midst of a competition. So if that video goes public before the competition is over, they're at risk of being disqualified.
Oh, well, I certainly don't want them to be disqualified.
Exactly, so if you show that, they may be disqualified. So you just take it out, I mean, you can easy edit, so you can just take it out.
That's very kind of you to tell me it's easy to do my job, but I got to be honest with you. You know, you're not, you're not showing me the respect of answering my questions.
Charlie, this has nothing to do with us, this is the students. You understand? We're here for the students. We are board members for the students. We're not here to try to become a celebrity by trying to badmouth people. We're here because we're trying to help students. All that matters are the students, okay? Is there any, are there any other comments?
I'm here to--
If you're the people in New Brunswick, and I thought it's important to bring a camera to the meeting--
Turn off the microphone. Turn off the microphone.
See what is going on here, and I think--
Is there a motion? There's a motion, please, second, we'll call.
Mr. Hush, Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Morella.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Excellent. So the Finance Committee report. Yes, it does. Yeah, we have to pull it to close session.
Finance Committee met earlier this evening, and I need a motion to accept the Finance Committee report.
Second. Roll call, please. Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Morella. So nobody missed a Seawood. Ms. Morella.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Item number 17, a resolution for closed session.
Before we do that, Mr.-- Yeah, I just had a little note I'd like to bring to the public's attention, maybe we could give them a moment of silence. A pillar of our community passed this past week, and they had affiliations to the city and to the board. It was Terrell M. Brenner, an attorney in New Brunswick, a graduate of New Brunswick High School, an athlete. Eventually, he came back to New Brunswick after serving in the military and became a board member and board president. If you look at the plaque of the old high school, now the middle school, you'll see his name up there as board president. He saw through difficult times of the issues mentioned in that tape tonight. He was active on the board, and he eventually became the board attorney, where he's served for many, many years. Then he became a municipal court judge in New Brunswick. And it was a tribute to the community, to this school, to the legal profession and the judiciary, so I'd like to pay him a little tribute. He died at 94 years old, I hope we all make it that far. And a moment, Mr. Sedowski.
Thank you very much. Again, item 17, I'll read the resolution for closed session. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act, NJSA 10:46, provides that certain matters of the public body may be discussed in closed session, and whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, personnel matters, matters of returning client privilege, now therefore be resolved, the four said subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff, and the medicine said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the nondisclosure in accordance with the Public Open Meetings Act no longer exist. Is there a motion? Second. Roll call.
Mrs. Sedowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mrs. Spencer.
Yes.
Ms. Morella.
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
We are on closed session.